Opening statements and introductions, Josh Brown.
I'm Josh Brown. I'm your current school board District Four member and I'm running for reelection. I was born and raised in this county. I went to school in our wonderful school district. My wife is a school teacher. Both of my kids go to school in the district. I am a businessman, not a former educator. I do own a business, run a business here locally. That's what my background is. But I'm a parent. That's the biggest reason, is I'm a parent. So I have business background, have a parent's mindset. And I think that we have, you know, with COVID and the mandate for pay raises for starting teachers and insurance, I know everybody's insurance here is double, quadruple, your homeowner's insurance, your car insurance, same with health insurance. We were dealt a pretty tough hand and we're finally making strides to be able to get out of that and overcome it. I'm asking for four more years because I think we're headed in the right direction and I want to see it through.
Hey, everyone. I just want to say thanks for coming out and watching us. I'm Camden Smith. I am also running for District Four School Board. I am running, I also, I have two children in this school system. I started as a substitute teacher and then I was a paraprofessional. I was a classroom teacher and then an associate dean in the school district. So I've been in the trenches. I've seen what goes on. I'm a parent, so I've seen that aspect also. I truly want to help. I'm worried about my kids in the school system. I've seen countless teachers leaving, good teachers leaving, and we have amazing teachers still in the school system. So I'm running, I've got an education background. I have a work in the school system, so I'm really trying to help. So I just want to help get some of our teachers back and retain the teachers that we have and then help see all of our children have a great education.
Hi, everyone. My name is Angie Nichols. I'm running for School Board District Two. I have four children who attended Waukulla County schools from kindergarten all the way through high school, Bryson, Colton, Cameron, and Britton, my son-in-law Dylan, and I have two amazing grandchildren who were part of the reason that I decided to take this leap of faith. I taught for 22 years, most of which was in Leon or Waukulla County. I began my career in Leon County and was one of the ones who flocked to Waukulla County because it was so amazing. All of my college friends were envious because I got hired in Waukulla County. So it was definitely a place that I loved having my children be part of. Unfortunately, I had to leave for the reasons that we're all talking about tonight, the extreme insurance rates, the lack of salary increases. It broke my heart because education is so dear to me. So I left in 2021 after watching my paycheck just kind of diminish every year and wondering if I was going crazy or not doing my math right. But it typically was because my insurance had gotten too exorbitant and I had to carry it for our family. So I made that difficult decision to leave. But about a year ago, I felt very led to get back to my roots of education and started attending school board meetings and seeing some of my friends, acquaintances leaving for the same reason. So I really want to give back to our school system. I want it to be the type of school that I love for my children. I want my grandchildren to be able to be part of it. I want it to make sure it's the safest place for our kids to go. I want it to be well-rounded, that our kids, you know, we're not just teaching the basics. We teach the whole child and that's why I want to run. So thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is June Davis and I'm running also, in case you can't figure it out, just joking. I'm running for School Board District Two. I've been in Waukulla County since 2009, a long time ago originally in Kentucky. When I got here and we found our house, I realized I loved this place. And over the years, anytime I can, I volunteer, I support, I help, I do whatever I can. And my kid, my baby, is about to start 11th grade and he has had a successful time this whole time here. And I want to step up from being a volunteer parent to being helping out the school board, helping out the district, keeping things that are strong, strong, areas that need some help, I want to help, do whatever we can to make changes, increase, you know, revise the budget, whatever we can so that we can keep this place a great place for our kids and our kids' kids and our sisters and brothers' kids, all of that. I want, I want Waukulla School District to remain strong and I want to do my best to work hard, learn, communicate, do what I can to help this county stay wonderful.
Great. Okay, the first question, again, it's the big question facing the district, probably all districts, health insurance. This will be Ms. Smith. Healthcare premiums for district staff have dramatically increased in the past five years, causing many teachers to seek employment outside of Waukulla County. What's your plan for reducing healthcare costs?
So as a teacher and an associate dean in the county, I thought health insurance was so high because of the agreement that we had with CHP. After I did some digging and then now that I'm at Florida Virtual School, I've seen and I've looked at other counties and talked to teachers and I've seen that it's the contribution and it's not necessarily the agreement. So like, for example, at Florida Virtual School, it's 20-80. So teachers, they are paying 20% and then Florida Virtual School is contributing 80%. In Waukulla County, from this, what I've been able to find, it's 40-60. So teachers are paying 60% and then the county's paying 40. So it's really lopsided and that's why it's so high. So, you know, a family plan could be $500, but for our teachers, it's $1,400. And that is almost not doable for our paraprofessionals. I mean, I've heard of paychecks being in the negatives. So it's just, we need to make some changes. We need to look at the budget. We're getting one of the highest budgets in education that we've ever gotten. We need people on here that are going to advocate for our employees and look at the budget and say, "That doesn't make sense." So that's what I hope to be able to.
Well, like I already said, this is one of my biggest goals is insurance, not just for teachers because everyone contributes to that and like Camden said, parapros, bus drivers, they're not bringing home anything. It is unreal looking at your paycheck when $1,400 comes out of it. I was bringing home $2,100 a month as a teacher. My child at 20 with no college education was making more than I was. So that was one of the reasons I finally had to leave. We can't keep losing teachers. Teachers of the year, district teachers of the year, leaving to go to our neighboring counties who are contributing more and that is the gist of it. We have to contribute more and that means making some tough decisions, looking at our budget and finding out where we can make revisions, allocate different resources if it's not necessary to reduce those costs. If it's not serving our children, then we need to look at it, revisit. Unfortunately, when I try to look at our budget online on the website, it's not very easy. So I can't tell you exactly how I can do that because that's one of my areas to be more transparent and our budget is not transparent at all. When I go to Leon County's website, it is very clear. I know what they spend their money on. I know how much the playground costs at that particular school. When I look at our budget, I need to be an accountant or have a reference book. So my plan is to work with our new superintendent, the board if I'm elected, and figure out where we can make some cuts to contribute more because that's what we have to do in order to retain all of our staff.
That's a popular question, huh? And I'm just trying to make everyone smile a little bit. A little bit of background, I have an instructional design that's been my career. That's what I did in college. So can I answer all the questions about the budget and what the plans are? No, but what I can promise is that I will connect with the new superintendent. I will connect with all my fellow superintendents. I will talk to everybody, meet with everybody. I will learn what the rules are, what the budgets are, what we can do, what we can't do. And I will strive to help make sure that our teachers are supported, that our staff members are supported, that our children are supported too. Everybody needs help in the district, the teachers, the staff members, the students. And so I want to step in, I will step in and learn everything I can, research everything I can, try to improve all the areas where we can, we need improvement and support those areas where we're already doing a great job. Do we need more money for our teachers? Do we need to increase their insurance? Absolutely. Do we have billions of dollars to do it? No. But we're going to do the best we can with what we've got. And so what I'm trying to say is I don't have the answer to everything yet, but I am committed to stepping in to learn to do the best that I can. And I got my 10-second alarm.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same problem that we've had. I can tell you that the solution is steps. There is not one single solution. If there was, we would have done that a long time ago. We have a limited amount of money, right? We have a $60 million budget. $57 million of it is given to us from the state. We generate $3 million from our local tax base here. We're mandated at the same time by the governor to give minimum pay to 47.5 before we can pay veteran teachers any more money. So our main goal over the last four years is to try to put more money into teachers' pockets. It has been difficult to put more money towards insurance because we have been given the mandate to get to 47.5. We will get to 47.5 this year. So that has taken us four years. Once we get there, our hands will be untied. We'll be able to pay veteran teachers more. My wife is a veteran teacher. I'd love to pay all the veteran teachers more. They deserve more. But we are mandated to do this. Once we're able to do that, we can find a way to give more money into not just our teachers' pockets. You have bus drivers, you have maintenance, you have everyone that we have to take care of. Everybody needs to share that. Everybody can't have it at once and it is going to take time. But over the last four years, we have increased starting teacher pay 21%. We're $2,000 short. We're going to make it this year. And again, I want to continue that trend. I understand the budget. I can see the budget. The main thing that you have to understand is we have a limited amount of money and you can't get anywhere in one step, right? It takes multiple steps. And there is a plan and we're following that plan to get where we're going to go. And I appreciate everybody that's been patient while we've gotten there, but we are getting there.
The next question is, begins with Ms. Nichols. Teacher raises, how? Florida ranked 50th in the nation for education spending and Waukulla is 55th in the state's 67 districts. The $1.2 billion for teacher raises is really an additional $200 million for teachers statewide. How do you raise teacher pay?
Well, this goes hand in hand with our insurance. You know, we are giving an allotment from the state. Again, we have the mandate that the new teachers have to make a certain amount of money, 47.5, before our veteran teachers can make any more. And with this new money coming down and allocations across the district working together, then that's what needs to happen. We have to get our new teachers up to the 47.5 by state mandate and then we need to focus on getting our veteran teachers the pay that they deserve so that they're not flocking to other districts. And that's exactly what's happening. They are leaving en masse exodus. I was one of them. I went to a neighboring district and had a $10,000 pay raise. I mean, so, and a decrease in insurance. Once we get our veteran teachers the pay that they deserve, then hopefully some of those that left will come back to our district and we can work on the retention that we need to. But it's going to take getting our new teachers to the pay that they are required to have by state law. And then we need to work on our veteran teachers and then allocate the amount to our staff across because all of our staff needs to have a livable wage. But it's going to take working together, collaborating, coming up with plans, meeting more, more workshops, more budgeting workshops, just putting our heads together and figuring out what we can do, what is not necessary, what can we cut? Because, I mean, it's definitely not going to be easy, but it's what we have to do to get where we need to be, the district that everybody wants to come to.
And as she said, yeah, it's aligned with the insurance, the same thoughts, the same plans. We have to meet together. We have to talk. We have to look at our budget. We have to look at all the places where we are spending money, make sure we're supporting all the areas and do our best, yes, to get our teachers, all of our teachers, up to the salary level we can, get all of our teachers up to, all of our teachers and staff members up to salaries and the benefits. So as board members, we have to meet, we have to talk, we have to get with the superintendent. We have to plan for all of this and look at what we've got and look at what we can move around. Think about it kind of like you do with your own budget. You're getting so much money. What are you spending it on? What can you remove from your budget so you can put more money over here and take it from over there? We have to plan all of that. And again, I get back to, we have to collaborate, we have to talk, we have to plan to do the best we can with the funds that we've got. And I'm pleased to hear that over the years it has been increasing and it sounds like coming up, things are going to increase even a little bit more for our teachers. So I hope to be there to help continuing that step up as we move forward.
Yeah, it has been a struggle. We are in, you know, the worst-paying state. We're 55th in the state. That is the worst in the country. So it is very difficult. Like I mentioned, 57 of the $60 million we get is given to us from the government. We don't dictate that. We don't correct that. There's nothing we can do about that. We can increase the $3 million. It's fairly simple. You either make more money or you spend less, right? We're doing our best to find ways to spend less. We have facilities that we are addressing and looking at now. We have personnel across the board. Some of it's at the top, some of it's at the bottom, some of it's in the middle. If you have personnel that you don't need, effectively run your business, right? That's what we're going to try to do. But as far as how do we get, you know, how do we get more money for teachers? We keep saying the $1.25 billion number because it sounds great and you think, "Well, how come we can't get teachers that pay because we're getting $1.25 billion?" That's like $385,000 for our district. That's a little over $1,000 a teacher. So as long as we continue to get that money every year, I can give it to teachers in teacher pay. If the state doesn't fund us next year, guess who owes that money? We do, right? So it is difficult, but it's not $1.25 million. It's not $250 million. It's $385,000. That's how much Waukulla County is going to get for its teachers. And I can guarantee you that money is going to go to its teachers, 100% of it. And then the rest of the money that we've been able to save is going to go to teachers, going to go to employees, right? We're going to do the best that we can to get there, but it is not these numbers that you're hearing. Those are the real numbers.
Okay, so I think it just goes back to priorities. We're getting a budget for teacher salary increases, so we need to use that money wisely. Our pay scale right now, the whole thing needs to be revamped, in my opinion. Zero to 23 years at 45.5, that's ridiculous. Teachers are working 30 years to top out at $50,000. Like, and then we wonder why teachers are quitting and not to mention insurance on top of that. It's just our priorities need to be revamped, look at where we can pull the funds, work together, get people on here that are going to try to work, look at what needs to be done and then make it happen. If it's 47.5 where they need to be, then we need to get it to 47.5 and revamp the whole thing to make it fair. Because if we don't, teachers are going to keep on quitting. They're going to keep leaving us and go to other districts that have figured it out, so.
Okay, the next question, we'll begin with Ms. Davis. Would you support a referendum for a local millage increase in 2026 to generate money for teacher pay? There are currently 26 districts in Florida with a mill or a half-mill levy. A local levy for one mill for teacher salaries would raise an estimated $800,000 to $900,000.
I absolutely would support whatever we can get, yes, to support our teachers. Now, question, what does our county leader say? Is that something that can be done? Is that within the budget? Is there money there? Can it be done? Absolutely, I would support it if it can be done. It's just another one of those topics where I want to connect with the right people, understand what can and can't be done and support what can be done, yes, to help us.
We are the ones that set the millage rate, so the millage is a tax. So the question is, are you willing to tax people to get the money to pay for the teachers? And the answer to that is only if I have to. And I'm not satisfied yet that we've done everything that we can to get every last dollar that we can to allocate the money better. But when we get to that point, if we get to that point and we're not at 47.5 again, then I absolutely support that. It is the taxpayer's responsibility to fund that. But they should not have to fund that without knowing for sure that their leaders have done everything possible to make sure there's no other way. And when there is no other way, it is your responsibility as a citizen. And I don't think there's any more worthy cause than the teachers and the students that we have. So I would 100% support that, but only until I've satisfied myself that we've done everything we can.
I've actually looked at millage rates in comparison to what we have, just because I'm curious. And we are comparable in our surrounding counties with our millage rates. I would not want to raise millage rates. Now, if all of our spending was transparent and I knew that it was going for the good of the kids, I think that the public would be okay with it, have some tax. Like, we would be like, "Yes, do it if it's going for what we know would be for the better of the kids." So that would be my thought on it. And I wouldn't want to raise anything on people, I'm a taxpayer, if we didn't absolutely have to and if I didn't know that it was absolutely going to do what was best for the students.
I will definitely say no. I do not support an increase in the millage, increase in taxes because I know that when I go to the grocery store, I have to take a calculator because everything has gotten so exorbitant. Prices are outrageous. Our community can't afford more taxes. Yes, we do need to raise our teacher pay, our salary, more insurance. But I truly believe that if we dig deep into our budget and find out every line item, maybe bring in someone to an outside team to just really delve into it, then I think that we can find the money where it's needed. But I do not believe that we need to tax our citizens anymore than they are already enduring.
Mr. Brown, you start with this one. What are the top three priorities you would address if you liked it to the school board?
I think it's safe to say 47.5 seems to be the big target number for everybody and rightly so. 47.5 is the biggest target. It allows us to do all of these things that everybody says they want to do. I believe everybody's heart's in the right place that's up here, so I think everybody here is committed to doing that. 47.5 is the biggest priority. You know, I've made it a priority of mine personally, this goes beyond the schools, to try to improve the respect level for teachers within the administration, within the school board and within the community. Like I've said numerous times, I mean, the level of respect that we gave teachers 20 years ago, 50 years ago, 100 years ago, I mean, 200 years ago, you couldn't even have a talent if you didn't have a teacher. They're not getting the respect that they're due from all fronts and I'd like that to change. Once we get to 47.5 and if there was money to do this, I would very much like to have a public relations position for our board. We are certainly not going to spend the money on that now till we get to a point we can. But it would go a long way towards making sure that the public had the information that they wanted. Simply that that position's there. It can be filled, but it's not going to be filled before we get to teachers where they need to be.
So obviously, insurance would be my number one target. And then pay, of course, I would like more contribution from the district for insurance and then I would like a full reset on the pay scale. Another thing I'd like to see is transparency, like has been mentioned a lot of times. Just the budget is really hard to comprehend. It needs to be comprehensible, not only for the school board, but for all the public. We should be able to pull it up and look at it and understand it. And then community engagement, I really want to see us embrace that and just want to hear it be a voice for the public because that's why we're elected. So that's what I would like to see.
Well, my platform is getting back to the ABCs, accountability and transparency, better budgeting and a commitment to children. So accountability, like having a budget that's clearly put out that everyone can understand that we set goals, that we share those goals with our community, how far in the future before we meet those. But definitely, insurance would be part of that with the budget. My commitment to children, I feel that we definitely need to keep our school resource officers and our guardians. I don't think our guardians need to take the place of our school resource officers by any means. Safety at this, our climate now is just so unpredictable. We definitely need to have our children, our staff in the safest spot that they can be. Mental health awareness, resources. We can partner with our community partners, our health department, nonprofit agencies to get those resources for our kids. Substance abuse awareness, we are living in a time where kids are being exposed dying from fentanyl exposure. But our staff needs to be trained to recognize those signs. But we can use our partnership and collaborate with other people without dipping into our funds because there's a lot of resources out there. And so I think that's something that we need to just really prioritize.
Overall, I would say supporting the staff, the children, the parents is my key overall. Now specifically, yes, the discussions you've heard that you're having about the pay and the insurance, yes, that is very important. A top thing that needs to be taken care of, to be looked at, to be reviewed. The other thing that I feel strongly about is the term that a lot of people use, transparency. I want to focus on communication, yes. Making sure that parents know what's happening, know what has happened, know, have a website, some kind of communication way to see information, to understand what's going on. But also, I want to make sure that the parents know that they can communicate with their kids' teachers, with, you know, the principals, with the board members. I want that communication to be strong, all out through, you know, through everybody, to make sure everybody understands, knows, has information, knows where to find that information. So the pay and insurance is one important thing, I feel like. And then that communication transparency is another thing that I think is very, very important that needs to be taken care of.
One more question and then we'll go to the close. But again, I think it was mentioned in the superintendent's questions about parental rights. How do you plan, and we'll start with Ms. Smith, on this one. How do you plan to engage parents in the community in the educational process and decision-making?
I think that just goes back to community engagement. We are headed toward more of an educational choice. And like they spoke about earlier, And like they spoke about earlier, it will add competition. So we need to be, to make sure that we have competitive pay, insurance, to get good qualified teachers, which we already have, awesome teachers. We just don't want to lose them and lose more. So opening up that communication, doing more things to let parents see what we're doing, the social media. So just being open. And I think it's just really important to be competitive with the way that it's heading towards school choice.
I think school choice is great because it makes us strive to be a better district. We can definitely, of course, I'm public school, pro-public school, so I want everyone to come to public school. But we need to market ourselves, like Kimon said. We need to make sure that people want to. I mean, parents should have the choice. I'm a parent, I'm a grandparent. I want to be able to be the last person that chooses what's happening in my kid's life. But I want us to be the district that they choose to go to. We have things that homeschool doesn't have. We have the opportunity for kids to be dual-enrolled at high school. We have just amazing courses with our CTE programs. There's so many things. We have the arts, the theater, sports programs, which of course you can do with homeschool, but just that interaction. We need to draw our public back to our school system. We have to make sure that we are letting them know by communicating, website-friendly, just having an open communication, not just the three minutes for our citizens to be heard at a board meeting, but having more collaborative workshops where the parents can participate, have an open-door policy within our district. I know that I always welcome people to call me, to ask me questions. I love meeting people, talking about it. You know, I might get a better idea after I talk to you. I think that's really important. And so I think that we can just be the best district that we can be by striving and just taking that challenge for school choice and say, you know what? You may have a choice, but you're going to choose to come here because we're the best.
I don't have anything different to say. You know, yes, communication, transparency, meetings where we can talk with the parents, where they can ask questions, websites, some type of media where we can, they can have information and know how great this district is and decide that, yes, that's what I choose because this is a great place. I think that's the way we have to get ourselves out there, if you will. We have to communicate. We have to be transparent. We have to let them know, again, all the great things that are happening, talk about budgeting, all of that stuff so that they know they can make a great choice for this district.
Yeah, I mean, we have, in my opinion, the greatest school district anywhere in this area. I deal every day with people that are looking for a place to relocate, looking to move somewhere. I know why they pick here. I know why they don't want to be in Tallahassee. They don't want to be in Jefferson County. They don't want to be in Gaston County. They don't want to be in Franklin County. They want to be in Waukulla County. They want to be here for the schools. We have a very great resource. Marketing is key. That is, kind of goes hand-in-hand with what I do. I've been preaching marketing to some of the fellow folks at the district office. Y'all probably noticed more videos, more marketing material that's coming out. I do think it's going to take, parents can call us anytime, right? For four years, nobody's called me that I haven't returned the call or talked to them. Nobody's come to my office that I haven't talked to. Nobody stopped to talk to me at a football game that I haven't talked to. I'm happy to talk to people anywhere, anytime. But it's difficult for people to get in touch with someone all the time. Having somebody within the district that is responsible for coordinating all things district-wide, putting them on a platform that everyone can access easily and see will make things a lot easier. That is part of the plan. That is something that I would like to see happen. But beyond that, your question was, you know, how are we going to be more transparent and open? I have one Facebook page. I have one cell phone number. I have one office. They're all open. I'm an open book. Anybody can get me anytime. But I do think we have, as a district, we need to do a better job of making sure that we're putting information out there so it's easy to get. Because like a lot of these folks, I'm a parent. I struggle to get that information when I need it for my kids, right? It's not easy to find. I know that. I absolutely know that. We know that. It is something that we're going to correct.
Yes, you start. I'm sorry. So we're going to go to the close? We'll start with Ms. Nichols. You have two minutes for the close.
Well, thank you all for giving up your Tuesday evening to come out.
Mike.
Oh, sorry. Trying to use my teacher voice. It has been an exciting time, just meeting so many different people in the community. When I started this idea a great year ago, you know, I prayed really hard on it, talked to my family, they thought I was crazy. And my husband, I'm used to him being crazy and to the politics. It's not my forte at all. But I, you know, I'm so glad I did it because I've met just so many people. I've learned so many different concerns that people have. And I feel strongly that I will do my very best to make a difference. I will always be a teacher. I love teaching. That is like, just, that's my identity. And so the thought of being able to give back to this district that gave me so much joy is something that I just really hope to be able to do. So I would appreciate your support, and feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions.
First, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Stodden and Waukulla Sun for hosting this and giving us all a chance to talk and meet more people, let more people see our faces, hear our voices, and know what we're up to. I hope that I let everybody know that the June that's been here for many, many years, who's volunteered, been a volunteer parent as much as she can, doing whatever she can to support her kid and all of the kids and all the schools, I hope that I get across to you that June is going to continue to be helpful, to support this county and do whatever I can and pray every day that, you know, this place stays strong and gets stronger and improves. And I want to be there to help as much as I can, wherever I can, make that happen. And I would appreciate, yes, your vote. And just a general comment, regardless of whoever you vote for, please vote. That's an important thing that supports Waukulla County, is that you go to vote. So I would ask for you, regardless of who you choose, please just make sure you go vote also. Thank you.
Yeah, thank everybody for coming. Thank everybody that is watching online. Thank you guys for volunteering to do this. I mean, there's no money involved here. You guys are doing this. David, appreciate what you're doing, everybody that's here. Appreciate my family for putting up with me, having to go through this. It hasn't been the most fun experience, having to run for reelection. And I'm thanking people, and I would thank the rest of the fellow candidates here. This has been a much more pleasurable experience than I ever expected. I think the school board should be proud of the candidates that we have running for office. The people that you see up here are good people. They have been good to each other. They have been honest to their word and have kept their word. So I'm proud that, no matter how this election goes, you guys are going to end up with really good candidates, and you should be sure of that. I have experience. We're about to get a new superintendent. We're going to have some new positions filled up there. We have a lot going on right now with the budget. We have a lot that is difficult to understand. We have a lot that takes some learning. And I think it's a good time to have somebody with the experience that I bring to the table. So I appreciate your vote, August Moniz.
So I have never run for anything. Political things has never been my thing, but education is my thing. I will finish my doctorate in January. Educational, it's instructional technology and leadership. So I want to bring my education, my background, everything that I've learned throughout my years in education over a decade. So I want to bring that to the school board and help make some good decisions moving forward in the future. So, thank you. I would love your vote, and thank you all for having this too, and volunteering your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates for being here tonight. It is great, enjoyed it. Thank you to David for running the soundboard. And thanks to Heather and Rachel for keeping everything straight. And thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you.